Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board Public Meeting, October 3rd, 2019. Please join me in salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised, this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2019 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, and posted on the bulletin board here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peasance, Mr. Senna Romita, Mr. Weinstein, and Mr. Dever Abson, Mr. Tovo.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Hashtag.
Here.
Mr. Mina Lepani.
Here.
Mayor Delcor.
Here.
Vice Chair Julian.
Here.
Chair Sarachi.
Okay. We do not have any considerations of meeting minutes or resolutions, and there's no Planning Board business, so before we get to consideration ordinances, open up to business from the floor if there's anyone who would like to comment on any matter that's not on this evening's agenda, please come to the mic. Okay? Seeing none. We'll now move on to considerations of ordinances. This evening, we have ordinance 2019-20, and it's an ordinance to amend the I-III light industrial zone to create a multifamily inclusionary overlay district. And, Mr. Maskey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's discussion is in reference, as the chairman said, to ordinance number 2019-20. It was introduced by the Township Committee at their September 24th meeting and referred to the Board for comment in accordance with the municipal land use law. This is another in a series of ordinances designed to help the Township meet its court imposed affordable housing obligation. This particular ordinance creates a multifamily inclusionary overlay district within the existing I-III light industrial zone. It would apply to Lot 105 and Block 58, which is at the terminus of Campus Drive. The slide that's up on the screens and it's in your package shows the block and lot. It's at the, let me just get this, at the terminus of the cul-de-sac of Campus Drive. And it applies solely to this property. At the bottom of the map is 206 here. As Campus Drive comes off of 206, there's Duke's Parkway West at the bottom left-hand corner. North would be to the left, south to the right, east to the top of the map, and west to the bottom. The next slide illustrates the current I-III zone, and this ordinance only impacts the I-III zone. This is all of the I-III zone that exists in the Township. Again, 206 is to the left this time. This is Duke's Parkway West. The jug handle is right here. 206 again, Campus Drive as it comes in. This is Harvard Way. This is the Temple property here. Currently, an empty building here. And this is the property that is the subject of the ordinance, the yellow shaded property. As noted in the ordinance, the overlay would permit the construction of a multifamily development that would be capped at 96 total units, 23 of which, which represents 24 percent, would meet affordability standards. As for the specific requirements, some of the specific requirements being proposed in the overlay, the minimum lot size would be 13 acres. The maximum impervious coverage would be limited to 30 percent of the entire tract. Maximum building height would be 45 feet or three stories. No less than 40 percent of the tract must be devoted to open space and conservation areas, and there would be a minimum buffer requirement of 100 feet from any residential district. So those are the basics of the overlay. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the Board members might have.
Okay. Anyone on the dais?
Mr. Maskey, is the building height or anything, anything outside of our normal ordinance?
I'm sorry.
Is the building height or buffer anything outside of our normal, what we would propose for any other inclusionary district?
No, it's pretty much in keeping with, with other projects such as this.
Thank you.
The 100-foot buffer is really more than we would, more than that has been required in other, in other instances.
And is it, is it envisioned that the access to the property would be through Campus Drive?
That's correct.
Would that, so that cul-de-sac would?
Through Campus Drive. Well, right, Campus doesn't really reach back quite that far yet, but they would extend it into the, into the lot, correct?
But from 206?
From 206, yes.
I see there is also a conservation and wetlands easement, correct?
They would have to, right, at least 40 percent of the tract would have to be under some sort of conservation easement.
Is there any commercial component?
No, the, this would just be, the overlay would just basically add the multifamily to the zone. The underlying zone remains I-III, so whatever the I-III zone currently permits could be built on this property, not with the residential, but if for some reason the residential didn't get built, the owner, whoever, could still build it as an I-III property, which is an industrial property.
How close is the back of that to Johansson, to the homes along that Johansson?
Well, the property boundary does butt the Johansson properties, the, what would be the eastern boundary of the property. You can see on the aerial map, it does butt up the houses. This is Johansson over here. The conservation, this particular portion of this property, there's a lot of wetlands and stream, et cetera, back in here, so if this property were to be developed, it would likely be more to the upper left-hand, which would be the northwestern corner of the property from here.
At least a minimum of 100, if not. At least a minimum of 100, if not.
Well, 100 is a minimum, right? That would be, in other words, 100 feet would be throughout the back of the property, where it'd be at least a 100-foot buffer from the backside.
Right. From the border.
From the property boundary, correct?
Right.
Here.
But I mean, in general, you have a lot of the wetlands and conservation area tucked in there anyway, so.
Well, it would, it would likely exceed the 100 feet, where obviously they, they have to get an LOI outlining where the wetlands are, and they have to stay out of there.
Any additional comments, questions from the dais? So I guess I will ask for a motion to open to public.
So moved.
Okay. Do I need a roll call, or I can do all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. If anyone from the, from the ordinance would like to provide commentary on this ordinance, please come to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kim Dandola. I live on 132 Johansson. A few questions. Number one, I'm not sure why we would want to put residential area tucked behind a jug handle, light industry on both sides of it. The people living here would have no access to sidewalks, buses, and they'd be surrounded by wetlands and industry and a jug handle that's owned by the state. Number one. Number two, this proposal has come up before. Previously, I believe in 2008, we haven't had time because this was a little bit of a surprise to us to get all the documentation. I believe it was 82 or 84 units back in 2008, and that was above the Township's density allotment, and it was turned down at that time. So now we have the same plot of land, the same space, asking for more units. The original design back in 2008, I believe, didn't even have enough parking spots for each unit to have a car. How is that proposal going to change this time? We need to think about the runoff, Johansson, Kimberly, Gale have all had problems with flooding with the wetlands here. You're now taking wetlands covering with impervious surface, and the water's going to be even more of a problem. Those are two of my issues. The third one is, this, this development would feed into Sunny Mead, which is already, as I understand, overpopulated after Sunny Mead run. Some kids, one sibling's at Sunny Mead, one's over at Woods Road. This would affect Sunny Mead as well. So the three of my issues.
I guess, as far as any engineering, I mean, that would be part of any applicant, you know, that would come, you know, forward to have to deal with those issues. I'm not familiar with the parking situation from the, from the prior application, Eric, you were here.
Application, my recollection, was for 88 affordable units on the site. The zoning board turned it down. This one, the concept plan allows for various parking in accordance with the zoning in the application. In terms of the obligations, this has been, as the board is, may or may not be aware, this has been approved by the court as part of the affordable housing application for the, for the governing, for the Township's obligations. So the applicant is going to have to meet what we believe to be more stringent requirements than existed in the application. It existed before the zoning board back in 2008, and for purposes of the application, which is not before the board, obviously, the stormwater runoff requirements actually would require them to have less runoff coming off the site than is currently potentially coming off the site as part of their application. So obviously, what you have before you is an ordinance to allow for the zoning. When and if the applicant comes before this board, the board will hear the, the obvious testimony and the necessary requirements.
Thank you, Counselor.
Couple of items. Understand your concerns. I think the issue of where it's situated is, is not necessarily a concern, given that there will be access to 206, whether or not they construct sidewalks or do whatever, you know, that's something that the developer will work when they, when they have a site plan. And as already stated, the engineering will require that there's no, there's no incremental flow going off-site to, to affecting the adjoining properties. They'll have to construct a base in that wall, and that's the way the engineering has to work. DEP won't approve it otherwise. I know you don't want to hear that, but that's the reality of, of what, how the engineering process would work. As it relates to the number of units, you know, as, as Mr. Bernstein noted, look, this is, this is part of our mandated.
So why was the density too high last time?
Well, I don't know the circumstances particularly why it was strictly a density issue, or there may have been other considerations at the time, but the way the, the, the plan is being laid out today is to help us, one, to get pretty close to the, to the number of units. I mean, it's, it's only a couple of units higher than, than where it was in 88, with the 88.
Without a parking spot for every unit last time.
Well, but, but I don't know how it was configured, so, you know, we will require that there'll be parking for, for the units. I mean, we have to have adequate parking, or it has to be part of the plan to ensure that there's, there's adequate parking for the vehicles per, per each unit. But the reality is, this is part of our mandated affordable housing plan, and we have to, we have to move forward with a compliant plan. Or I can tell you, here's what would happen if we don't. This piece of land, they will go to the courts and say, if the Township doesn't have an affordable plan, I can build one, and I could put 200 units on this instead of the, the 90-plus, you know, some we're trying to put on here. So it's, it's a process we have to manage. I, I know it's, you know, you'd rather have none.
I was just thinking that, you know, the, the, there's probably a lot of open, more open areas that aren't surrounded by industry and a jug handle and by the state for building.
It's fair, but, but we don't, you know, the, the developers have land that they want to build upon. We don't get to necessarily pick and choose what plot of land gets, gets built on for development purposes.
Unless you've zoned it, unless you've decided not to zone it for.
Well, but that, that may be permitted, so we could say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make this part of our plan, but what I could tell you, what will happen is, the intervenors will sue, and they'll build whatever they want, whereas at least this way, we get to control a little bit.
Well, if you're saying that you only need 24 percent of these units to be, you're getting much closer to your affordable housing, you're gonna tell me that there's no other land that can be built on in Hillsborough that can meet those 24 percent?
Well, but there has to be someone that wants to build on them. These are not, we're not building these. It's not the Township building them. We're setting a, a zone that will allow someone else to come in and do that for us.
Also, remember, this is not the only project. There are many other several projects that, to meet this need, this is, unfortunately, happens to be a plot of land that's impelable. Now, it is zoned I-III, so that's not to stop from someone putting an industrial complex right back there on that same plot of land, but even more impervious, that, to your concern about stormwater runoff. So this essentially is a, possibly a less dramatic impact to you as a neighborhood than having a bunch of trucks possibly in your backyard.
Well, we have a light industry already back there. We have the daycare back there, your doctor's care at the temple. All of those things are, you know, they're fine.
I'm aware. I know there. Yeah, that last thing about your question about Sunny Mead School, as an alumni of Sunny, Sunny Mead School, and I'll tell you a quick story. I moved to Hillsborough in 1973. I went to three different elementary schools in three consecutive years because they were busing people around the Township as the town grew. I always missed the first day of school because no bus knew to pick me up. The, so I'd walk in head down, mom taking me to school, but the, the affordable housing does not care, or does not take in consideration the infrastructure, unfortunately. They, they do not consider the school systems, they do not consider the traffic. So unfortunately, that is not a consideration that they, they consider, though I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I'm sure our esteemed attorney can fill us in even more than that.
Mr. Chairman, since I was part of the negotiation for this, I will tell you two general things. We had multiple discussions with the developer and asked him the same questions. Why do you want to develop this piece of property in this situation? Why do you want this? And I will indicate, my recollection to the public is, the number of units he was seeking was significantly more than the 96 we ultimately settled for. I believe it was somewhere around 100 and some, 150, but I, don't quote me on it. The, we had the discussions, why here, why here, and the answer is, we got to where we are because he has the right to come in, he was an intervener in the litigation, and as the mayor indicated, the alternatives were not any better. So we attempted to get as small a development, as concentrated a development as possible, taking into account the issue of parking. It is not nearly as, with, with onsite amenities that are in the plan, and, you know, we will see what the applicant does, when and if he shows up, assuming this ordinance is adopted.
I'll, just, just one more comment, and your, your point about schools, and I know Kameen Lepani addressed it. One, this is probably a long way off before the development is actually in place, so, you know, the, the school impact is something that will, will ultimately need to be planned, and we'll, we'll have to coordinate that with the school district to understand, you know, where the development will be and where the school kids, so we can, you know, that, that each elementary school can be rebalanced in the right way. So there'll probably be some redistricting that'll play, take place down the, down the, down the line a bit. I, I think we're all in the same mindset that if we didn't have to build the number of units that were being mandated to, we wouldn't. So if, I would be more than happy to get just some of the phone numbers for your state legislators and give them a call and, and tell them what you think about their, you know, their lack of action on their affordable housing plan, because we've, we've undertaken that process. We'd love to have you join us.
Thank you.
Just one point on the parking, your parking question. I don't know what the situation was with the original proposal, but every development now has to meet, is a state requirement called residential site improvement standards, which on average requires about two spaces for every unit, so they would have to provide that much parking.
Anticipating then, Mr. Mayor, I happen to have a phone number ready and available because we, we are fortunate that right out on Amwell Road is the office of one of our Assemblymen, right? And he's also a Township resident, and I think it would be very, you know, worthy because as the courts have stated, Trenton has failed to act, the legislation. They, they were pushing for them to do the legislation to resolve this issue. Their inaction, obviously, was inaction because the court said, okay, fine, we're taking over the process. And this is what has led us. I mean, I was on, on this governing body for many, many years, and it's a big source of frustration. So his office is out on Amwell Road, at 390 Amwell Road, and if you want to take down his number, it's area code 908-829-4191. And he could, you know, you could ask him why he hasn't pushed Assembly Speaker Coughlin to push any legislation to resolve this issue. So, okay. Is any other comments from the? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Veronica Armour, and I live at 124 Tower Avenue, and it sounds like.
Can you just come forward a little bit?
Sure. It sounds like that the ordinance might go through, and the things that, if it does, I'd like to consider is the environmental impact here. When my husband and I moved here seven years ago, one of the things that we noticed in the area, especially with Red River here, is the issue of flooding. And we knew already that houses on Kimberly Avenue were in the flood zone, and fortunately, our house, thank God, was saved from Hurricane Irene, we heard, and did not flood, but my concern is with that environmental impact of putting more impervious cover. I hear what you're saying, that an industrial might give us more impervious cover and create more of a problem, but in any proposal that's here, regardless of the units that we take seriously those issues, because in this day and age, with climate change, we need to consider what the environmental impact is going to be, and I understand that we can't fight everything in the courts, but we have to consider the people that are already living here and doing that. The Green Hills area is a very affordable place to live compared to the rest of Hillsborough. Thank goodness for that, else we would not be living here, but it is a place that young families can come to actually afford a modest home and get started, and if we create more of those houses in the flood zone, that is going to not allow them to start families, to start homes, and have a stable community here. So however you decide tonight and going forward, please consider that environmental impact and how it'll affect the families already here and that could possibly stay in this town.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Every application that comes to the Township, whether it be affordable housing or not, industrial, residential, has to file an environmental impact statement with the board. The fact that it's an affordable housing development doesn't exempt it from floodplains and stormwater regulations, et cetera, so they, they would still have to meet all, and it really is state regulations, it goes beyond the Township. So anybody who develops any piece of land has to take all of that into consideration, and as Mr. Bernstein said earlier, the state rules, you have to actually reduce the amount of runoff from what currently exists on any piece of property. So there has to be actually less water coming off, not only this site, but any site than there is now, so that the environmental impacts are taken into consideration.
It's not just water, though, too. The environmental can be, sorry. But the environmental impact can be also with waste and everything, how it affects the waterways and the flooding in that area, too. So impervious cover's one thing, but there's a much more, higher environmental impact in terms of the waste that'll be coming through this town in that case.
Yeah, the, the application. That's also, just, your, your point is very fair, we appreciate it, but those are all matters that, that have to be evaluated, and the applicant will have to comply with all of the DEP requirements regarding all those items you just, you just mentioned. So there's state regulations that address all of that, and the, the project has to be compliant, or DEP won't give them the, the authorization to move forward.
Also, there's, part of the process is that the application goes through the Environmental Commission before it comes to the Planning Board, so a lot of those issues, technical issues, are talked about, addressed, gone over, you know, in depth on the Environmental Commission. The Environmental Commission reports the, that information back to the Planning Board, so all of those issues that you're talking about, if you want to come to the Environmental Commission and chime in when we're, when we're there, you're welcome to do that also.
Yeah, those meetings are public, just as this one, so you're more than welcome to attend the environmental sessions.
And you're, and again, just, you know, your, your point about, you know, environmental impacts along those lines is, you know, very well taken, you know, just a little bit from a historical perspective on affordable housing. There was at one point where municipalities could actually transfer their obligations payment to another municipality, and if you think about, it would make a lot of sense. The cities loved to receive that. I mean, they had the infrastructure already in place, rather than, you know, tearing down, you know, you know, large areas of trees and, and building on, you know, on open space, rehab, you know, where there's already jobs there, and, you know, we already had the infrastructure, but the legislature took that away, too, and that's another point where they could resolve this issue, is to bring that back. You know, every municipality is struggling with this, and unfortunately, fair share of housing does not care about infrastructure, doesn't care about impact to schools, doesn't care of real impact about traffic, and that's why, you know, it is important for this municipality to have its plan in place so we don't lose control. We could lose all control of planning, and that happened to this town, you know, about, not quite 20 years ago, we lost all control because our plan was actually held up in the courts. So I think right now, being proactive not to allow that to happen and to maintain as much control as possible. Okay. Anybody else?
A little too short. Hi, my name's Kimberly O'Carino. I live at 136 Johansson Avenue.
You can probably tilt that down if it's easier.
Or just, or tilt it out of the, of the light.
That works.
Okay. I've lived at this address on and off my entire life, and one of the things, in addition to the concerns that have already been brought up, is the letter that we received indicated that the purpose of this ordinance was to incentivize the construction of affordable housing, but throughout the conversation, it sounds like you guys have already received an application for affordable housing, which no one in our development has been privy to, and I'm interested to know what incentives are we presenting to someone to actually develop this area, because that's going to have a detrimental impact on us as well. We've already just gotten recently reassessed for taxes. We have yet to see the results of that, but passing the zoning ordinance is one thing, but then creating incentives for someone to come in and develop it is another, and I think that we all have the right to know what those incentives look like and what the application that's been presented looks like.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, the word incentive is, the incentive actually that they got was the zoning. There is no other incentive, there were no other promises, other than to allow for the overlay zone that's currently at issue before this governing body. In terms of an application, there is a concept plan that exists that basically comes in accordance with this ordinance. Where it's going to be built, the impacts on the, on the LOI, this board has not seen it. There is no application currently before. They had to produce a concept plan for purposes of consideration by the special court master and by the court, but the application has to ultimately conform to this ordinance with the limits that exist, and the incentive is to allow for the building of the affordable housing and the residential, the market rate residential versus an industrial property. That's the incentive.
So there's no tax write-offs for the developer for 10, 20, 30 years?
There has been no application for a pilot, there is no request for a pilot. I don't believe the agreement calls for a pilot, that I recall.
Mr. Barr?
Yeah, this is.
Just a 24 percent as our normal.
And actually, that's, in order to reduce, it was a twofold issue, as we are doing across the town. We are trying to reduce the overall number of units to avoid massive building on these sites, including this one, and the court requires basically 20 percent building for, for, for sale, and 15 percent for rental, and all of our applications at the moment are 24 percent, which means it's a reduction in total units statewide, and an increase in affordable, which therefore reduces the number of places we have to build them.
Yeah. Your comment about incentive is fair, we, but it wasn't intended to mean financial incentives, it's simply to drive the compliance with our, with our affordable plan and change the zoning accordingly.
Hi, I'm Daniel Kopko from 104 Kimberly, and I want to speak to something that was said earlier regarding the flood in the area that we've had in the past. I was there for Hurricane Irene, and one of the good things about that was that even though everything flooded out, the waters eventually receded fairly quickly. We were able to get back in the following day and start doing our demo and stuff that we had to do. One thing I think that might be being overlooked is that that block, and it's not up on the map, but on the FEMA maps, it specifically has that on Block 58, Lot 105, the Duke's Brook Tributary, 25 percent of its run is through that lot, and that's responsible for water drain-off in a significant way, going back into the streams and disappearing after flood events. We don't want to be in a situation where, like, the Lost Valley, where the water sits there for weeks. Like, right now, we have significant waterways to allow that water to get out when the flood events do happen, and my concern is that, I understand that this is a zoning issue right now, but what's being overlooked? being overlooked is that the water runoff specifically from that brook is going to get lost in the whole thing. And if that brook is removed, water runoff is going to be significantly impacted.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident they won't build on, on the brook.
Well, what if they dam or block it or other reason from that section?
They're not allowed to by DEP.
Right, that would be prevented and preserved?
Absolutely.
Yeah. The DEP would, would, would require that those, those waterways continue to have full, be completely open so that the issue that you're addressing would, would not be negatively impacted.
But when and if the applicant comes before, you're all obviously going to be noticed accordingly and you can raise all of those issues with the applicant and have them address exactly how they're planning to deal with the issue and/or not deal with the issue if the case may be. This is only, folks, this is only part one, this is the zoning. The application will have to come before this board at a future period of time. We have an obligation to deal with the ordinance and basically in this year, according to the court's requirements. And the application will be dealt with sometime thereafter and obviously you will all be noticed as the court moves into order to be.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, I guess water is always a sensitive topic for those who have been flooded and I've been flooded and I remember Hillsborough being an island back in Irene and unfortunately, you guys took a big part of that front. Those bridges have all been done, a lot of drainage has been improved, so now when it does rain, we can get in and out of town. The bridges don't flood, at least access is there. But just keep in mind that when the, any development that comes into any part of town, whether it's a flood-prone area or not, the key word that was said several times, which maybe a lot of people don't understand, is it has to prove to be a negative impact. That means if the project actually has to be better than when it was when they moved on. So if, for example, I'll just throw a number, if there is a hundred gallons per minute of flow, it has to be at that or below to be approved by the state Waste Water Management. So in essence, the project will have to be improving the site, not keep an existing platform. So all the things that you're concerned about, as we are, is drainage, runoff, whatever, we do not want to recreate any problems. We want to improve it. And part of this building, potentially, if it's approved, will be actually, in essence, help improve the area that is behind that existing property now. And that is whether it goes in your development or is built over here, that even doesn't, that that has no existing water problem, it has to be a negative impact as, or positive, whatever way you want to get, has to be less water flow than what's existing now. And that will all be done in engineering and when the Planning Board comes from the Planning Board, they have to prove to the engineers that it is done and then it's sent to the state DEP for them to approve. So it's not just us, it actually has to go way above our pay grade, so to speak, to be approved for us to even consider.
And remember, it also has to go to the DRCC, Delaware Rabbit and Canal Commission, who has jurisdiction over a large part of Hillsborough. So they would need to get permits related to water from the DRCC as well.
The technology has increased also in terms of the engineering, in terms of how they build these structures now compared to, you know, ten years ago as well. So if you look at some of the, the new stormways, detention basins, they're built again with a lot more improved technology than they, than they used to be. So, I mean, it's probably better than it was, if it's going to be built, it was built now rather than ten years ago.
Anyone from the audience?
Ladies first.
Hi, my name is Colleen Schwartz, I live at one thirty-four Taylor Avenue. And this was brought up several years ago and I apologize, I was a little bit late, so you might have already talked about this when I wasn't here. And at that point, it was turned down. Why was it turned down at that point? A similar circumstance and it was like unanimous, it was like, you know, whoa, no way, we're never going to put people living there. It's not suitable for anybody to live there. So I was just wondering, I don't exactly remember, I remember what the feeling was, the feeling was that Hillsborough was better than this and we wouldn't want anyone living somewhere that wasn't suitable. So I was wondering, why did that get turned down and then what happened with the problem with the low-income housing? Where did that go? What happened?
Mr. Chairman, I will stand corrected by Mr. Maskey. My understanding was that the applicant came before the zoning board seeking a use variance to build eighty-eight all affordable housing units. There were issues regarding the number of units, there was an issue regarding the affordability issue, there was an issue regarding onsite amenities. My recollection is there was concern in the neighborhood about people wandering into other people's properties in order to use playgrounds and related items. This obviously, by the way, is before, I believe before the jug handle. And there were, they basically, from what I gathered, did not conform or they, the zoning board was not convinced that they could meet the requirements for variances under the municipal land use law based on the zoning. This obviously, the zone change would eliminate at least that piece. They still have other requirements. It is not an all affordable housing project, there are other all affordable housing projects in town, as the board is well aware of, having approved one relatively recently. So the situation has changed in that regard and the applicant wants to move forward and apparently what they didn't want to do eleven years ago, they do want to do now.
Is this the same applicant?
I believe it is. It's the same, it's not the same applicant, it's the same property owner.
Oh, okay.
Different applicant, they had a, my understanding was the applicant had a contract purchase to acquire the property, since the project didn't go through, there was actually an appeal, my recollection of the application by the property owner. The court ruled that the property owner didn't have standing because they weren't the one who brought the application in the first place and the property lay fallow until they became-
So that, this was eleven years ago? I couldn't remember what year it was. I just found out about-
I believe it's two thousand, I believe it's two thousand eight. And they be, and they were an intervenor in this, they've been an intervenor in this litigation for the last four years, so.
So did we make affordable housing anywhere else after they got knocked down? Because that was one of the big things at the time.
There were affordable housing projects elsewhere in the township that have been built since and there are additional affordable housing projects that are being built in continuation of the township's obligation as the mayor, the committee man, the chairman and everybody else. The price we are paying is open space and we are trying to limit the amount of open space that needs to be, in terms of open space, open properties like this one.
All right, so we didn't satisfy our quota or whatever?
No, it's the next round, so. So there was, there was, there was a piece that was done back in the late, you know, two thousands and now we're in round three. So round three, the requirements are such that they'll take us through our obligations through 2025. So we had satisfied round two fully, we were fully compliant and we had been working towards that. This is now round three, that we need to develop a formal plan that needs to be settled with the courts in order to make us compliant with round three.
I would imagine the developers, like, you know, Hillsborough is a good place to build something, you know, people want to live here, obviously, it's a nice place, good schools, all that. So I'm assuming that they're going towards something like this to try and get a variance because it would be cheaper, because it's not an ideal location. So I was just curious about, you know, how things have changed from then when it was... Now, I'm understanding that this is just the beginning, whereas I think last time, I didn't find out about it, you know, more towards the end, I remember there was like engineers, lawyers, screens, whatever, so that's not, that's to come.
This is just, this is just the zone, this is just to change the zoning. There will ultimately have to be an application that will be heard at this board as well that will go through all of the architecture and engineering and environmental impact and all the things that we were talking about here from an application standpoint, where all those professionals will be available. Correct.
So last time, the zoning was approved? Like, before it got up to all, when I remember this, so it hadn't-
No.
The variance had been approved last time?
No, the variance was not, if the variance had been approved, we wouldn't be here today. Because if the variance had been approved, they would have built eighty-eight afford, all affordable units on this site back in two thousand and eight.
So tonight, they're not, you're not deciding?
All, all the board is doing, so that everybody understands, there's a process. Only the governing body can introduce and adopt ordinances in accordance. There's been an introduction by the committee in accordance with the municipal land use law, the ordinance, a land use ordinance is then referred to the Planning Board for board consideration as to whether or not the board has any questions, concerns, et cetera, and/or has an opinion pro or against. The decision will be made at the end of this meeting whether to refer this back to the committee for their approval for second reading, which I believe will be October twenty-second, if that's what happens.
Oh, so this is just saying-
This is just, this is just to allow that we are going to zone the prop, we are going to place an overlay zone over the existing zoning to allow for this to occur. Then it becomes an applicant's obligation, if they want to develop the property, to come in with an application that meets the zoning of this because they can't get variances from this board, use variances, and meet the requirements with a conforming application, which I indicated earlier, at that point, you'll all probably be well aware and all be here to sit and listen and be questioned with, to fare thee well, the engineers, architects, developer, et cetera, relative to the plan.
So basically, there, you guys are just agreeing, are we going to let them go forward past tonight to see if they can get a variance?
The board is agreeing to make a recommendation to the township committee as to whether this ordinance is acceptable relative to a change in the zoning by the local management.
Yeah, so just, just so we're, there is an existing zone on the property. In order to allow this application, or an, or an application to ultimately be compliant and meet the affordable housing plan that we're trying to put in place, the zone has to change. So-
But that's not happening tonight?
The zone changes, the application is not. So we're, this board will recommend, or not, this to, back to the township committee because the township committee is the only body that can approve the ordinance to change the zone.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
But this board has to recommend it back to the township committee, if that's the case. And-
And you've already gotten like some reports on like the DEP. Obviously, you'd have to have something before you can make a decision if you can change the variance, right?
No, that won't happen, that's the applicant's responsibility.
So you just have to say, okay, I think it may be a good idea and then they can worry about it?
We are providing an opportunity for an applicant to come to this board seeking to develop the property with a zone different from what is currently on the property.
Okay, that makes sense, you don't have to go on.
That's all, that's all we're doing.
Thank you, thank you.
And just coming back, when you had asked what had changed, it's basically, again, and I know I already mentioned this before, it's basically Trenton has screwed this all up. And they never got their act together to get the round three rules in place. You know, this went on for over probably a good ten years and then finally, the, the affordable housing advocates went to the courts and the Supreme Court, State Supreme Court gave Trenton, the legislature, one last try to get their act together and they failed. So now, Fair Share Housing, which is a nonprofit advocacy group that is seeking all this affordable housing, you know, imposing affordable housing obligations, which does, you know, numb the not mind of how this, you know, how the courts have allowed a nonprofit group to have this much power, you know, throughout the state, but this is the reality of what's happened. And now, everything is accelerating. You know, the courts are now, have gotten involved and every municipality, you know, is under the gun right now to put together an affordable housing plan, you know, within a reasonable amount of time or you lose control of all the planning. So.
Hi, my name is Lars Lohermann, I live on two oh six. And I heard people talking about the flood, we came in late and I don't know whether this property is going to be developed or zoning change or whatever that is with it. But I would just like to say, since a couple of people were saying the EPA and everybody's getting involved and they're going to take care of it, so they're not going to get flooded, I wish that would be true. I've been living here over forty years, every year and every time there is a construction around me, I come in here and I complain. And I've been promised by everybody, all the mayor, engineer, lawyers, planning board, everybody, it's going to be better. Yeah, it's going to be better for the developer because they're going to get the permit, but it's going to be worse for me because every time it rains, I get flooded more and more and more. And last week, finally, the MUA raised the concrete on my property so they will not have any flood water coming out of the sewer line and everything and I have to clean it up and smell it for weeks. Hope it's going to work because I've been trying to get it fixed. Finally, they did it. And also, I, I come in here all the time for every meeting and I'm listening and I've been promised and told and I write letters, I have all kinds of expenses for the blueprints, everything I had to do back in the eighties. And I'm still getting all the trees washed out from the brook, I have to clean it up. All the garbage coming from the shopping center, I have to clean it up. I come in here to ask, I was talking to people last year before we went down to Florida and I was promised they're going to take care of it, they're going to get back to me. So far, nothing happened. The brook is full with garbage, it's overflowing, not even going in a sand side, it has to be, okay? And I can't do it anymore, I had an accident and my shoulder and my back is out, I can't do it anymore beside that I'm getting old. But I've been promised they're going to take care of it, they're going to let me know, nothing has happened, okay? And also, back in the eighties, when they were cutting down a corner of Ambulance, two oh six, Clermont Development developed all the corner property in there, all the concrete, all the blacktop, everything was developed, done and put down and delivered to the brook and the bush was pushed over my property. I have the picture of it, I was told, the newspaper, congressman, mayor beyond the, everybody promised they're going to take care of it. I still have it in there, now they're going to do the construction in there, they're going to do the construction on the other side, they're going to do the corner again. So I would just like to know what's going to happen with all the water because EPA don't care, don't even answer my letter, don't even care about that I have all this wetland and everything, they come out, yeah, 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 we have a problem, but we can't do anything for you. So I would just like to know where is this property is going to be, how it's going to affect my property, if anything is going to be done about the properties that are going to be developed around me or I just have to get the boat so it's going to flood, I'm really able to get into my house. Thank you very much.
Uh, as your word is continued, it's about four miles north of your property. It's almost to Somerville, the development. It's by Duke's Estate.
So the, the brook is going to be a south of me, not a north of me?
It's going to be, well, nor, it's, it's north of you. Do you know where the Duke's Estate is on two oh six? Do you know where the Duke's Parkway West is, the, the light there?
Yes.
Right across the street.
Okay, that's why I was asking, so the water is not going to affect me because it's not coming-
It's not on your tributary, no.
Long, long way from your property.
Yeah, but the, the corner, where they're going to do all these hundred and ninety apartments and stores, cut out all the trees, it's going to affect me, I asked for the, the blueprint for-
Yeah, sir, we, we can't address that at this meeting, we're talking about this application, we can certainly talk about that at-
I understand it, but I'm just trying to say that I am getting the problem with flooding and the way I was listening in here, you were talking about the EPA is going to get involved, they have better techniques, the engineers and everybody is concerned about what's going to happen. No, they don't, the whole thing is a polony because I'm getting it forty years, forty years and I'm still getting more and more and more water. Every development is approved, nobody cares about the water, nobody cares about my problem. Thank you very much.
Any additional comments?
Hi, my name is Sharon Baragi, I live at one thirty-three Taylor. I've lived in that development since nineteen sixty-one, so I'm giving away my age. But over the years, I've watched our development flood more and more every year. And every time there's construction along two oh six or any kind of development, it gets worse. I helped my aunt and uncle bail water out of their house on Johansson Avenue after the last two floods that they never had, they were lifelong residents there. We have two abandoned houses on Duke's Parkway East, they can't be sold, the people had to walk away. Houses on Kimberly that didn't flood years ago, flood to their roofs. This is going to impact us, anything built there. I'm asking you not to change the zoning there. I'm asking you not to change the zoning there.
Okay.
Thank you. Again, you know, we can sympathize, you know, with the frustration going on, and again, just, you know, calling upon everyone to, you know, reach out to our state representatives. Like I said, I had mentioned earlier, we have one that's less than a mile from this building, his office. They are not resolving this affordable housing, I call affordable housing crisis, because of what they're doing to every municipality, they're causing all this overdevelopment. I agree, you know, that, you know, all this excess development is impacting environmentally. There were some very reasonable, you know, rules in place, they took them away in favor, you know, of allowing, you know, development and putting the power in the developer's hands. But, you know, I urge you to, to reach out to the state representatives, you know, on this issue, to, to actually enact, because again, I had mentioned, you know, earlier, you know, the courts have gotten involved, you know, Supreme Court gave them one last shot, you know, one last chance at the apple, and they failed. And now, this is what happens, fortunately.
Any other comments?
Hi, my name's Chris Sills, I live at 148 Johansson Avenue.
Raise the mic a little bit.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Okay. Chris Sills, 148 Johansson Avenue. One question, years ago, when they did it, I understand, were here to zone it, but they were presenting it, the developer, or the application, why now this time are we doing it reverse? You're going through the zoning process to get it zoned, why not put the burden on the developer at the same time to submit their application, approve to the township rather than us, go ahead and pass the zoning?
Simply put, it's to, to allow for an inclusionary affordable district. It has to, we need to be compliant with our plan, and this is a component of the affordable plan.
So that's what it's more for, is for the compliance of that? Okay, thank you.
Additional comments?
My name's Christie Garcia, I live at 166 Johansson Avenue. I want to touch on something he said before, that eight years ago, or whatever it was, 11 years ago, came up, and there were concerns about the low affordable housing, where people come through the, cutting through all the people's houses, and stuff like that. What's the difference now? You're going to put a home in that little area where you have a cul-de-sac, a little U-turn, jug handle, in and out. So the people, if you, we do decide to put homes there, in affordable homes, housing, you're going to put people in that little section where they have no place to go. There's no place for them to come out, like she explained before, there's no sidewalks, there's no, there's no buses, there's no route, they can't go out on 206 unless they're going to play Frogger and try to hop across 206 to get into East Dews, the park. But you want to put housing there. Now, not saying that with, with the low-income housing comes riffraffs, not saying that. You, you, you may, you may not, but you want to put everyone in there, and there's nowhere for them to come out. Where are they going to go? Where are they going to branch off to?
What do you mean by come out?
Where, how are they going to, there's, there's no, there's no parks, there's no buses, how are they going to get to the store? I don't want to have, see people walking through my backyard, to walk down Johansson, to take a walk down to?
Well, they would have to drive out to 206 and make a right. I mean, there's an entrance, there's an egress, it's just, right at the end of the cul-de-sac there is how the, where the entrance will be.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not an isolated, you have?
Where is the sidewalk for them to go down to East Dews? What about the kids that are playing back there?
We don't have a plan in front of us.
We don't have a plan yet.
This is just, this is just a zoning.
Well, I just, I just said, standing there is a zoning issue.
My, my point is, those issues, they're valid, but they, but we're not going to be able to address them until there's actually a plan in front of us. As to the sidewalk issue, and how they're, you know, where, what amenities will be available to the, to the residents that are there, that's not something we're able to address, because we don't know what the developer, in totality, is intending to build.
I understand that, but my, my just concern was, it's just a, should hear out, this is my concern. I live back there too, when it rains, my whole backyard looks like a swimming pool. And I back up to that property over there, and that's my concern, the flooding as well, but also, you know, some people there, where, how they're getting out. I don't want to see people climbing through my property, trying to get out. And you want to put affordable housing back there too. People with affordable housing, they might not have cars, we don't know what they have.
It's only 24, it's only 24% of, for rest of market rate, it's not 100% affordable.
No, I understand that.
So, it's not really fair to say that they may or may not have cars, but the point of matter is, that the mayor said, is we have no, no way of determining what project is being built. This is strictly a plan to allow a developer to present something to us to approve or disprove, and make any changes that we require. That's all this is.
And I understand, that's why I'm bringing it to you.
So at the?
I drive through Hillsborough, there's plenty of open land, where people can go, you know?
Some of that?
Accessible from there. But you want to stick them at the end of Hillsborough, with the houses?
Well, I mean, I think the one thing is, it's not where we want to put them, I mean, these are property owners or developers, that they think they've got a marketable property, and I think the market at the end of the day is going to dictate whether or not that, you know, one, you know, will be successful, or if it ever even gets built. Because that, that'll be a market-driven.
We're not determining the various locations, this is simply, this property owner has indicated that they can provide a development that will allow us to help meet our obligations. So if we don't meet our obligations, as I said earlier, they will stick their hand up and say, I can help you build all the affordable housing you want, tell me how many you want me to build on this, on this property. And the courts will say, go build whatever you can. And this allows us at least the opportunity to say, we've got a, we've got a development, we can set a zoning that would be as responsible as possible with this property, and not allow the developers to run wild with what they, what they ultimately want to do. It allows us control over what we want to set there. Your concerns are noted, you know, and we're, we will make sure that the engineering is such that it does not impact, and those are the requirements of the engineers. You know, the comments notwithstanding, those are the DEP requirements that say, this is how the plan has to be built, to ensure that runoff is, is less than what it is today. All of the issues with egress, and sidewalks, and amenities, and, and if there's, you know, some type of a playground, whatever it may be, that'll all be part of the, the plan, once that's presented to us. And you're free to come back at that point and challenge the developer on, where are the people going to walk to? And how, are you going to put a playground there so the kids could play? And what is your plan to allow for school busing? All of that is fair game at the, at the, at the planning board hearing, once the application is in front of us. But this allows us simply to control the development that allows us to meet our affordable housing obligations.
Mr. Chairman, just, just a comment on, on the term affordable housing, and who lives in affordable housing. We had, we had an applicant, application earlier in the year, and the developer conducted a pretty interesting exercise. She took the township's salary ordinance, and demonstrated that several of our police people, several of the people who work in this building, would qualify for these units. And they all have to meet strict background checks, income checks, so it's just so everybody's on the right page in terms of who lives in it, police people, half the people who live in this building, who are, rather, work in this building, would probably qualify.
And with that being said, I'm not saying that everyone in low-income housing is a bad person.
No, I understand it, no.
I grew up on low-income housing, so I know. And I know what comes, the good and the bad that does come with that. So I'm not saying that everyone, that everybody here could possibly be a low-income housing. I grew up on that, so I know where, what the good and bad to that, is what I'm saying. You want to put that there, are you going to have enough police presence to deal, if the bad does come with that, which I'm crossing my fingers to break, that everything works out for the bad? But if it does get zoned, do we have enough police to come there and handle that?
It's, it's the same, it's the same police presence that would be if it was built somewhere else. Yeah, they're going, yeah, we're going to have, we need to ensure as a municipality that we've got adequate police coverage, and we continue to be one of the safest communities, recognized consistently in, in New Jersey.
I understand, but anywhere else, like you have it on Amro, Amro's wide open, and they can go anywhere you want on Amro. Here, you're confined, you would, you would be confined to that area, because you've got to walk out of 206. I'm, I'm just saying, I know it's not being built, but I'm presenting that to you.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's?
As, for housing.
Right.
I would nothing back, I would prefer that nothing would go back there, and you let the deer and the eagles and everything else, there's the frogs, and my sons catch back and goes, what's they back there? But housing back there just doesn't?
And I think it'd be, you know, worth a question again, I know the councillor had said when they were discussing it, you know, with, you know, with this developer as to, you know, why do they think it's a good idea? I mean, this is a, again, they feel they must have a market for it? I, you know, I, I can't say. They're going to be competing with all the other affordable housing developments. You know, I think, you know, that there may be saturation, and, you know, this may never, again, it may never get built. I mean, that, that has happened in this town, and it created some other issues along the way. But, but, you know, it is market-driven, it happened all through the state, you know, going back, again, the late 90s, early 2000s, when age restriction was all the rage, that was all your affordable housing, what happened? There were so many developments, half of them never really came off the ground, and then the legislature got involved and allowed them to overturn the age restriction on them. So, you know, it, you know, again, all this is going to be market-driven. You know, again, it's, you know, I, I keep repeating back, it's our, you know, got to, got to get back to Trenton, got to get back to our state representatives and tell them to get off their you-know-whats, and, and, you know, do what the courts have told them, go deal with the legislation on here. But they've, they've chosen not to do anything. And, you know, this, this is frustration for us, it's for, you got, you know, for all you residents, I mean, I, I hear it.
If you have to look at it, we're looking at it, we're getting flooded, you wouldn't want somebody to put something in your backyard, and then all of a sudden now you have to deal with, now your house getting flooded, the dink getting flooded before, and all the things that were covered with the housing back there. That's all I know.
Yeah, we understand.
Anthony Calino, I'm at 136 Johansson. Question, it seems to me that what we're doing here is trying to protect ourselves from the developer to approach the state and possibly build more than 96 units. Is there any way that we can consider possibly lowering that number to something maybe like 50 or 60? And if we do pass it at the 96, and the developer comes with a plan and we deny it, can he still go to the state and put more than 96?
The answer to the first question is, the 96 was a number we could all work with that was acceptable and avoid, as the mayor has indicated, the possibility of contesting our plan. If he's denied, or he can't, if he's denied this application, then we'll be back in court and we run the risk again of having potentially more, right, units than 96. I don't think it's going, it's not going to go down, folks. I mean, we have gone around and around on this, this is not something that came, this took nearly two years to get us to where we are tonight.
Yeah, the, the only thing that would change it from, you know, that could reduce, is if when there is a formal site plan and there's some engineering work, that there's some restriction that, that pops up, whether it's wetlands or, or things along those lines that would limit the amount that could be built upon. That's, which is a possibility, so that's, but that's that site plan discussion.
So, if you guys go ahead and change the zoning, and it's at 96, they come up with the plan, the developer does, and we deny it, or you guys deny it, whatever happens, you said we go back to court again, and he can keep going and keep applying?
They would choose us.
No, he'll go back, he'll go back to court and seek to overturn the township's plan regarding its overall plan, of which his property is one of them.
And he could get joined in by other developers now, because now the township doesn't have a compliant plan, and that opens up a Pandora's Box. Now, you know, the one way something, you know, could be, you know, reduces, if he decides to go to all affordable, and he found some type of, you know, was able to get the finances, because we, we have one, as councillor alluded to, a couple of months ago, we approved one where the developers make, it's building 88 units, but it's all affordable. And it's through, you know, various, and I don't know the financing that was involved that allows him to do it, but, let's say, the developers are not doing this for charity, I mean, they're here to make a dollar, and that's why the courts, you know, make the range anywhere from 15 to 20 percent set aside. We're very fortunate that, you know, because, and I think someone mentioned, Hillsborough's so desirable, there's actually a lot of competition to come in here, and we're able now to leverage and get 24 percent out of it, so.
The reality is, is if it was an all affordable unit, it has to, has to, the state would provide tax incentives to allow them, to make it economically feasible, because no developer will build all affordable units.
Regardless of whether it's affordable units or not, I'm just saying, can we lower the number, or if we do pass it at 96 and he, we deny his application, can he go back to the state and possibly put 150? You know what I mean, if we don't, if we don't?
And if the answer is yes.
Yes, okay, so if we do pass this, and we say, all right, you do 96 units, does that protect us if we, if we deny his?
If, if the plan came forward that was non-compliant, then it would give the, it would give this board the, you know, the leverage to, to, to not approve it, because it's, it's non-conforming to the, to the zoning.
Okay. Last question.
And that would limit, and that would protect, to some degree, the, from any litigation. So, having the zoning helps control what ultimately gets, gets developed there.
Okay. Last thing, I know you said about the flooding, there, there have to have a negative impact. What happens when, all right, everything passes, the DEP looks at it, and they say, yeah, this looks good, it's not going to affect you guys, but it does. How do we get, you know, how do we get made whole from the flood damage that we're going to receive? Is that, is that on the township, is it on the developer? Is that even something that we can pursue?
Counselor.
I don't know that I can answer that question, because I don't know if there's any examples.
Place to answer that.
The answer is, I don't think anyone's going to give you, including me, legal advice on that issue. When and if it happens, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Gotcha, thank you.
Hi, my name's Christie Garcia, I'm also at 166, my husband here. I just had two questions. What is the deadline for the affordable compliance for our town? Like, and what, where are we in?
So?
What are they demanding, and where are we?
So, we have to get, we have to reach a settlement with the courts, we have a courtmaster, and there's a judge assigned in, in Somerset Superior Court in Somerville. We actually had a fairness hearing.
We had a meeting, not a fairness hearing.
A meeting this morning. As of today, we have immunity, which is called immunity, basically, from all these developer lawsuits that we were talking about, until November 1st. And that's been extended a couple times, but right now, it's, the date is as of November 1st. So we either have to reach a settlement, or seek a further extension of that, of that immunity, so that the developers can't sue us. Basically, the courts are saying, we're negotiating in good faith with the courts, so we're not going to entertain any lawsuits until, until that deal gets, gets put forward. So we are working with these, the developers, that'll help us meet the plan that Fair Share is, we're going to have to agree with the settlement agreement. And until we have a final settlement, we don't have a settlement. So it's, we're, we're working towards it. Most of the towns in Somerset County have, have, I think all of the towns in Somerset County have reached our settlement, with the exception of us, and we've said we're not going to settle and agree to a, an agreement unless it's something we think we can, we can abide by and makes sense for, for the people of Hillsborough. So we have not agreed to a settlement yet, because we don't think we're, we're at a, at a point where Fair Share is, is reasonable enough with us.
Okay. And my other question, I just wanted to clarify, a nonprofit organization is in charge, essentially, of how this is all going down?
So, so there's authority granted to this agency, Fair Share Housing, which you may have heard the term COA, the Coalition on Affordable Housing. That group was sort of a quasi-agency of the state, that's been disbanded, and now there's sort of this, this negotiating piece on the, on the affordable housing side is being run through Fair Share. So the, the agreements are essentially the municipalities, Fair Share, and the courtmaster and the courts.
And how, how are they, how are they doing this? They're just, no one else is paying attention, or?
No, 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 no.
When the state Supreme Court entered this decision in 2015, this, this When the state Supreme Court entered this decision in 2015, as, as the chairman has sort of indicated, that they had run out of patience with everybody. They gave Fair Share Housing Center standing at every litigation and every affordable housing matter throughout the, the state, which is, I believe, my recollection, is somewhere over 300. They therefore have automatic standing relative to approval, review, et cetera, and they're an advocacy group. That they advocate on behalf of, you know, low and moderate income housing people. And that's how they have standing, unlike the last two rounds where other things got done or didn't get done, they have the right to basically have veto power over these things.
So this goes back to the chairman's comments earlier, that had the legislature actually put a procedure in place so that there was a, a reasonable negotiating path for the municipalities to determine what their affordable obligations would be, probably could have avoided having fair share in the middle of all of this. But they've advocated their duties and the power's gone to people that shouldn't have it, frankly.
And is that a reversible process? Can we?
No.
Not a reversible.
Not unless the legislature acts and there's no indication.
Is what a reversible process?
Can, if I'm calling my state representatives and telling them to fix this, do they have recourse now, or is it too late?
The answer is the legislature can now pass laws to deal with what's left of the issues. I will indicate, I suspect the impact on the current situation will be minimal, but I will also indicate that over the last four years, the legislature has shown no indication of any desire whatsoever to touch it. In fact, over the last 45 years, because this goes back actually to 1975, the legislature has shown little desire to get particularly involved, probably over the last 40, so.
Why? Are they just, other stuff is more important to them or?
Good question, you can ask your legislators currently there, why? The courts did not get involved in this, the Supreme Court did not get involved in this matter happily or graciously. And there's a certain irony because in her, in Judge Slovecky's decision back in 2015, the court was hoping this would all be done in six months. We're now in year four.
Okay.
And as the mayor indicated, we are the last town left in the vicinity. In Somerset, Hundredan and Warren, we're the last ones left who haven't even, who haven't settled. Everybody else has settled, and we're holding out because we're trying to get the best deal, and part of the issue is, we've got multiple intervenors, this being one, there are actually eight of them. And we have Fair Share Housing, who basically has its own quasi-veto power over everything.
And I.
It's a crazy process. I, I don't know how else to explain it.
Other than calling and being a huge pain in the butt, like, what, what do I, what can I do?
Absolutely, 100%.
And tell them how you're going to vote. I mean, I think that's really what it comes down to, is, look, the entire legislature, the assembly, is all up for reelection in five weeks. And I think a lot of that is advocacy by the voters to get out there. And, and just because we're the, you know, this is round three, this only carries us to 2025.
There's another one after that.
Round four will be coming.
If nothing changes, we will have another round.
Every time there's a round, how many more do we have to build?
It is a moving target.
But this goes back to the, to the point of, if the legislature actually acted and developed a, a plan to determine ultimately what each town's obligation should be, and they're going to vary, you know, the, the density should be driven by, by circumstances other than just landmass, which is really what is driving it today. Because we are so big and have open space to, to be able to, to buildable and similar towns around us, we're tasked with a number simply because we can, not because it makes sense. Whereas the, the density should be in the areas that have mass transit and have walkable jobs and have downtown areas and have the ability to, to have higher buildings that, you know, can have.
Higher density.
Higher density properties. We don't have that capability here, but that doesn't matter to, to the group. So there has to be some legislation at some point that will stop this madness, and we are trying to get there. And I, I will, I'll give you one other point, and if you want to go take a look at it, on the township website, we did, we did a town hall on affordable housing back in April. I always said it was in the room across the hall. We had experts, we had our, our counselor, we had our affordable housing attorney, we had one of the top assembly people in the state, an expert on affordable housing, all speaking and trying to educate the public on what this, what this craziness is and how we fix it.
I would have gone to that.
It's on the, it's on the, it's on the township website, or you can look at the Hillsborough YouTube channel, you can watch the entire thing.
Oh, okay.
It's about two hours.
You might want to reference with your legislator, there's something called the Fair Housing Act. It was passed in 1986, which basically established, there used to be rules to this process. It was 1986, it established the Council on Affordable Housing, COA, a state agency within the Community Affairs Department. There were rules and regulations and plans. Over the course of the year since then, it's basically collapsed for all the reasons you've heard tonight. Basically, what the legislature needs to do is tear down the Fair Housing Act and rebuild it. It's not rocket science, it's not that big of a, I don't know why they make it such a big deal.
Pleasure.
But, you know, they need to take the Fair Housing Act, tear it down and rebuild it. It's not that difficult.
Yeah. It's very interesting. I'm, I'm.
Tell your friends.
I'm going to tell my friends.
Tell your friends, make calls, read, educate. We've been trying here for, I don't know how many years.
I've been on here for years.
And honestly, every group that comes up, like yourself, when there's some of this, when this application comes through, they're like, why, 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 why? And we tell them the same thing, and they're like, we didn't know. You know, and that's why we, we did the, the symposium to try and get that information out, but it's, for some reason, it's like the best-kept secret in the world, that, that what's going on in the state, and it's, you know, blown up in front of your eyes, and we've been trying to, you know, educate and, and fight it the best we can, and, you know, it's, you know, I grew up in this town, and my neighbor here, that's been here since 1961, a little before my time, at 73, I tell you, I could walk across 206 without even looking.
Wow.
That's when I, and now you would.
I came tonight because.
Not even close, right?
To, we're concerned about our, you know, home values and flooding and just having this extra piece in our, in our way, more traffic, more everything, and to find out that it's just someone, like, doing a little dance over, I, I'm, wow, okay, thank you.
I have to just throw this in too, just for you. When the Fair Housing Act was passed in 1986, set up rules and regulations, but there was still no guidance as to where housing should be. Close on the heels of the state, of the State Fair Housing Act was something called the State Planning Act, which established the State Planning Commission, which led to the creation of the State Development and Redevelopment Plan, which was a statewide guidance that COA was supposed to follow. And it established areas for growth, and you may have heard of the state plan over the years. Another thing that was allowed to collapse over the years. So they need to rebuild the Fair Housing Act and the State Planning Act.
Okay. Before 2020.
Okay. Okay, any more from the deists?
Hillsborough YouTube channel. It's on there.
Oh my God. Little army of people.
We'll leave that up to you guys.
That's right.
Motion to close public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Counselor, next act?
We are seeking a motion, Mr. Chairman, for the board to recommend to the Township Committee for Adoption, the multifamily inclusionary overlay zoning district for this property to allow for the possibility of a development of multifamily housing, including 24% affordable on the site within the restrictions and the conditions set forth therein, obviously subject to an application being formally presented to this board at some point in the future.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion to approve or to pass up a recommendation to the Township Committee for their consideration for their approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Scoville?
No.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Committee in the potty?
Uh, yes, but with obviously your, your thoughts in mind when, if anything comes to us.
Mayor Delcor?
Yes, and you'll be noticed when the plan comes forward, so when, when the plan is in place, we welcome you back.
And Judge Rogers?
Yes, and I echo that, and I had to deal with the fallout when we didn't have a affordable housing plan back in the early 2000s, and it was not a fun time to deal with those developers, who knew they had the upper hand at the time?
Okay. So we do have another meeting next week. We have two applications.
I think you forgot my vote.
Oh.
But I echo the same sentiments, and I will vote yes.
You were getting a free pass.
I was getting a free pass, I don't want to.
Okay. Okay. So just for everyone, we do have a meeting on next Thursday evening, October 10th, a couple of applications. I know I will not be in attendance, so hopefully the vice chair will be taking center stage.
Yes.
Okay, and if anyone, I think everyone has already indicated whether or not they'll be able to make it, but if anything changes, please let the office know as soon as possible. And with that.
Motion to close.
Okay.
Second.